Heavenly Father, we're here this day asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our communities. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, the environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity in Georgetown County, South Carolina, and humanity worldwide. Our prayers for peace and brotherhood in America. Our prayers for peace and brotherhood worldwide. We ask of all these things in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move down to the approval of agenda. Does the recommendation to move report 1580 nonprofit spotlight forward on the agenda? Line Vision Services. Is there motion for approval of agenda with the notice changed?
No move.
It's been moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson and Coggins. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. With that being said, we'll move forward with nonprofit spotlight, line vision services. Daniel J. Rosaka. Hopefully I pronounced your last name correctly.
That's okay. I've been called much worse to my life.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. And thank you to the Francis P. Benel Foundation for the opportunity to be here today to talk a little bit about the ways in which we are helping to improve the quality of life for residents of Georgetown County. This is important work, meaningful work, and we appreciate you taking time out of your meeting to hear from us and hopefully to leave with more insight about how we can help the blind and visually impaired community. Our organization is a statewide nonprofit that was created by the State Association of Lions Clubs in South Carolina in 1969 with the vision and the hope that together lions could do more for the state's blind and visually impaired population than what any single club could ever accomplish on their own in their community. Today, Lions Clubs across the state, including clubs in Andrews, Georgetown, and Polley's Island, remain vital donors and volunteers and supporters of this work as we continue Helen Keller's charge to be knights of the blind in the crusade against darkness. We're ending blindness in Georgetown County and across South Carolina by providing an array of vision healthcare services and helping to deploy those resources to those in the community with the greatest need. We conduct free vision screenings for the public to help preventively identify and address vision loss. We provide eye exams when more detailed diagnostic information is needed. We provide eyeglasses to treat basic vision loss. When more substantial conditions are identified, we provide eye surgeries to permanently save and restore sight for low-income families. When individuals are dealing with permanent blindness or vision loss, we have a vision technology program to equip them with technological resources to live safe and independent lives. And each year, we conduct a fishing tournament for the blind and visually impaired to connect them with other like-minded individuals in the community and to help improve their quality of life. Through this array of services, we partner with other nonprofit organizations, healthcare providers, local funders like the Benel Foundation to help bring these services in a strategic and thoughtful way into communities across the state, including Georgetown County. Next slide, please. We can talk all day about the statistics behind blindness, but stories tend to be more powerful. I want to bring to life for you the reality that our clients are facing when they come to us. All of our clients have total household income of roughly 200% or below of the federal poverty guidelines, and in most cases, it's significantly below. Jane, whose name we've changed to protect her identity, is one of those clients who lives in rural South Carolina, very much like rural western Georgetown County. Jane is an elderly widow, and her total monthly income is $1,196. After she pays her rent and utilities, she only has $476.31 left. And with that, she has to pay for food, medicine, transportation, life insurance, and phone service. I think we all know that that's not possible. Jane is also facing permanent blindness due to cataracts and retina conditions in both of her eyes. If she were to try to pursue those treatments on her own, they would cost her nearly $15,000 in out-of-pocket expenses. It's a service that's simply not available to Jane. And so Jane risks further isolation and unsafety in a rural community. But we can fix that. Thanks to our network of ophthalmologists, anesthesiologists, and surgery centers, we can drop the cost of those eye surgery services. In the case of the cataract surgery, what would cost her $6,800, we can acquire for just $1,300. The retina surgery that would cost her $7,700, we can get for only $2,000. And because she's qualified as an LVS client, Jane doesn't have to pay for a single cent of those eye surgery services. Because of this, Jane's life is going to be transformed. Her sight is going to be permanently saved. With the host of other things that she has on her plate that she has to deal with, she won't have to worry about navigating her way in blindness or in darkness. These are the kind of barriers that individuals in Georgetown County are facing when they experience blindness or vision loss. And we have the resources and the programs and the expertise to help mitigate the harmful effects that could come from that vision loss. So why vision? Can we go to the next slide, please? We have found that vision is a good indicator of the overall health and well-being of county's population. You can see that the dark counties on the far left where that map is illustrating the prevalence of vision loss in the community are the same counties that the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation has identified as having general poor health and well-being. And there was a recent study from the Sisters of Charity Foundation on the prevalence of poverty in counties across South Carolina. All of those factors line up and mirror each other, telling us that when we find communities that are experiencing large amounts of blindness and vision loss, those are the same communities that are likely to be more unhealthy in general and more likely to be experiencing poverty. And we have found by addressing vision first, we better enable those individuals to manage other health conditions and to take back control of other aspects of their life that they might be struggling with because of that vision loss. Next slide, please. We also know that vision and eye care sits at a pivotal intersection of social determinants of health. And the UN recently passed an exciting resolution last summer that showed how eye care is integrated into more than a dozen of the Sustainable Development Goals. Now, some of that is pretty obvious, like general good health and well-being. Believe it or not, if you have a vision loss condition, you're two and a half times more likely to have an early death. But there's some more subtle and interesting ways that eye care is part of our daily lives. If you have an unoperated cataract, you're two and a half times more likely to be in a vehicle accident. Vehicle safety is an important part of the safety and sustainability of our cities and our communities. So you can start to see how eye care is connected to other areas of our life. Free, high-quality cataract surgery also can increase household earning income potential and can lift families out of hunger and out of poverty. So we know that these solutions exist. Next slide, please. I also want to share with you another resource that we use to deploy our financial resources, including Benel Foundation dollars, in strategic communities across the state. The CDC's Social Vulnerability Index was designed to help local officials and nonprofits respond more effectively to disasters, whether those are natural disasters, those are common here on the coast, or whether those are public health emergencies or other types of community disasters. These, the Social Vulnerability Index looks at 15 factors from the census, groups them into four themes, and ranks how likely it is that certain communities will need additional resources and time to effectively respond in the event of a disaster. We're mostly focused on the prevalence of blindness, which falls into the disability category. So that orange map in the top right there is the factors that we're looking at most closely. But this information is provided at a census tract level to really help us drill down into more specific communities and help us understand how we can make a bigger impact there. Next slide, please. Again, we rely on a robust network of community partners across the state to help us accomplish these resources, these programs. The most important of those for Lions Vision Services is our eye care provider network. These are ophthalmologists and anesthesiologists and surgery centers that are donating part of their time and their resources to help us correct vision loss for low-income individuals. We can take every $1 that's contributed and leverage that into another $4 in the value of services that we can provide. One of our most significant partners in the state, in fact, one of our top four eye care providers all of South Carolina last year was the Coastal High Group. And their Bay Microsurgical Center here in Georgetown is one of the best eye care facilities in South Carolina. We're honored to be able to work with them through our programs. So that you can hear specifically from one of the clients that we serve, we could go to the next slide. We helped an individual here in Georgetown last August who had permanent vision loss to acquire an ORCAM reader that would help him read his mail, help to read the checks that he was writing, helped in general for him to not be as dependent on his caregivers and on others that were there to watch out for him. And he simply wrote back that this ORCAM reader is a wonderful device that can help people like myself that are visually impaired. For example, it helps me read my mail and other important information. So here are individuals that we're directly impacting in Georgetown County. We're empowering them to live safe and independent lives, and we're improving their quality of life and overall lifting those individuals up in our community. Next slide, please. So with that, we would invite you to follow our work on social media. We're not on TikTok, but we're on most other normal forums of social media. We've also got a monthly newsletter that we send out that you can sign up for on our website, lionsvisionservices.org. And we thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit more about our work in Georgetown County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. How does Medicaid fit into this scenario?
That's a great question. Most of the time, the rates that we can get for these eye surgeries are the Medicaid reimbursement levels that these healthcare providers can get reimbursed from. So that does factor in. We don't require our clients to be uninsured. About 86% of our clients are completely uninsured, but some of them are underinsured and might have Medicaid that doesn't completely cover their services. We can step in and help in those situations. We do have a pretty rigorous vetting process to make sure that the financial need that these individuals have is verified and is documented.
Thank you, sir. Daniel, how does the, someone find out about LVS to if they need your service or help?
Great question. Most of our referrals, especially for eye surgeries, which is our largest program, come directly from the ophthalmologists that we work with. So those ophthalmologists are seeing clients on a regular basis. They might encounter someone that needs an eye surgery, but they know can't afford it. So they would refer them to us to go through our application process. We also get referrals from other nonprofits. The Georgetown Diabetes Core Group has referred us a number of individuals. We work with the free medical clinics, including Smith Medical Clinic. And then, of course, our local Lions Clubs are always on the lookout as well. They're our local eyes and ears to keep us informed on what's going on in the community and help to connect people in that community with our programs.
Do y'all get a lot of children, preschool age, before they get into the education system?
We do not. We don't get very many referrals for services for, for the youth. A lot of our Lions Clubs are doing those vision screenings in local schools across the state, so they're providing those free vision screenings for students. We don't have the funds or the staff to do those on a broad scale. So again, that's where Lions Club volunteers come in to do that. They, they work a lot more with students on a regular basis. We do offer services. There's no age restrictions for our programs, but we just don't get a lot of referrals for youth at this time.
So Daniel, if we know of, let's say, a younger person and a senior in need, you're saying utilize our local Lions Club here to for the further referral?
You can, or you can just connect them directly with us through our website.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I beg to mount any more comments, questions from council. Thank you. Thank you for all the services you provide. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We move down to the public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that once the three-minute time period has expired, we ask that you conclude your statements promptly. Madam Clerk, before we go forward, I would like to just read something to the record, basically, okay? Many of you have been watching the sports for all over the past week or so, and just wanted to highlight one of, something about our natives. Many experts had already handed Team USA, he after silver, before the gun was fired, given the All-Star Quartet from Jamaica they faced. Experts were wrong. The youthful Americans executed almost flawless handoffs and ran away with gold in the world-leading 41.14 minutes, the fifth fastest time in history in 0.4 in front of the Vonted Jamaica squad that featured the gold, silver, and bronze medalists from the 100-meter. Coastal Carolina track and field's Melissa Jefferson made history once again on Saturday night as a former charter player at Carvis Bay High School, Georgetown County. Sprinter was crowned a 2022 World Champion as part of Team USA's women four-by-100-meter relay gold medal team at the 2022 World Athletics Championship in Eugene, Oregon. Running the first leg of the race, Jefferson and her teammates Abby Steiner, Jenna Perdini, and Tanisha Terry recorded a time of 41.14 to take first place overall. The time is the best in the world this year for the sprint relay event and the fifth fastest time of all time. Georgetown County Councilist stands, congratulations to its native Melissa Jefferson, and we ask that the audience and council give Ms. Jefferson a nice, handy round of applause for her accomplishments. Thank you all for allowing that executive privilege to take place. And now we move to public comment session. Madam Clerk, do we have any sign up for public comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have two speakers signed up tonight, and as you stated previously, each will have up to three minutes. Our first speaker is Fred Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members, and Ms. Johnson. I'm Fred Williams. I am president of the West End Citizens Council, and I am here on behalf of the citizens of Georgetown West Side, and more specifically concerning that Howard campus. And it came to me as a thought after seeing things play out that that campus appeared to be utilized as a dumping ground for the county, the school district, and whatever else. Well, apparently, no one spoke to the residents of that district or of that area. They were none too pleased. So my mindset was rather than let this thing languish into being just a dumping ground, there are thousands of people who are Howard alumnis. And I thought it was a total disservice for them to just have that campus just sitting languishing. So I decided I was going to approach the school district about perhaps we can do something with that property, with the land use that remained. And in the process, I decided to engage some of the city officials along with the school district and county officials, just to see where we could go with this. I was elated to find out the school district looked like they were just waiting for someone to approach them with this idea. And what we have, they were ready to relinquish it. And before I go any further, Mr. Coggins, thank you, sir. Mr. Coggins helped us with the architectural design of the layout for that school property. And the school district was very receptive. I had to ensure I had some allies in backing me with this endeavor, and I did. So we had an overall goal for this property and endeavor going forward. Then we got to the part about funding. That is why I'm here. I am requesting that the county assist us all they can in pursuing this. I think it would do the community a great service because I think all of you know of the places in Georgetown County, it's the Georgetown West End that has historically been denied access to funding and proper services for it to go forward. It's, it's a community, could be a more vibrant community, but it can't be it with no funding. And this is what our request is tonight. We would like for county council to consider funding this particular project. If you don't have the money, perhaps you can pull a rabbit out your hat and come up with the money. Because me standing here, I know exactly what kind of money you guys deal with and what it's for. And I am requesting humbly that you allocate some money for this particular project. It's a noteworthy effort, given the fact that prior to the 70s, our school was the major, major contributor of highlighting Georgetown County. This was a school that represented two state championship teams. They had a lower state championship team. Our high school coach was one of two coaches from South Carolina East Coast that's in the South Carolina Hall of Fame. His, one of his proteges happens to have his name on the Super Bowl trophy. That was one of his best friends, Vincent Lombardi. They both reigned from Inglewood, New Jersey. And this is one of the reasons why I'm making that request, too. It would be sinful for this, this particular project to die, given the, the number of alumnis who attended Howard School and graduated and went on to further endeavors. So if you would, please consider this request. Thank you for your time.
Jim Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. I have a handout. Am I permitted to give it to you?
Yes, please.
I am president of the West End Citizens Council, and I am here on behalf of the citizens of Georgetown West Side, and more specifically concerning that Howard campus. And it came to me as a thought, after seeing things play out, that that campus appeared to be utilized as a dumping ground for the county, the school district, and whatever else. Well, apparently, no one spoke to the residents of that district or of that area. They were none too pleased. So my mindset was, rather than let this thing languish into being just a dumping ground, there are thousands of people who are Howard alumnis, and I thought it was a total disservice for them to just have that campus just sitting languishing. So I decided I was going to approach the school district about perhaps we can do something with that property, with the land use that remained. And in the process, I decided to engage some of the city officials along with the school district and county officials, just to see where we could go with this. I was elated to find out the school district looked like they were just waiting for someone to approach them with this idea. And what we have, they were ready to relinquish it. And before I go any further, Mr. Coggins, thank you, sir. Mr. Coggins, help us with the architectural design of the layout for that school property. And the school district was very receptive. I had to ensure I had some allies in backing me with this endeavor, and I did. So we had an overall goal for this property and endeavor going forward. Then we got to the part about funding. That is why I'm here. I am requesting that the county assist us all they can in pursuing this. I think it would do the community a great service because I think all of you know of the places in Georgetown County, it's the Georgetown West End that has historically been denied access to funding and proper services for it to go forward. It's, it's a community, could be a vib- more vibrant community, but it can't be it with no funding. And this is what our request is tonight. We would like for county council to consider funding this particular project. If you don't have the money, perhaps you can pull a rabbit out your hat and come up with the money. Because me standing here, I know exactly what kind of money you guys deal with and what it's for. And I am requesting humbly that you allocate some money for this particular project. It's a noteworthy effort, given the fact that prior to the seventies, Howard School was the major, major contributor of highlighting Georgetown County. This was a school that represented two state championship teams. They had a lower state championship team. Our high school coach was one of two coaches from South Carolina East Coast that's in the South Carolina Hall of Fame. His, one of his proteges happens to have his name on the Super Bowl trophy. That was one of his best friends, Vincent Lombardi. They both reigned from Inglewood, New Jersey. And this is one of the reasons why I'm making that request, too. It would be sinful for this, this particular project to die, given the, the number of alumnis who attended Howard School and graduated and went on to further endeavors. So if you would, please consider this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. I have a handout. Am I permitted to give it to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll talk. I've learned of Mr. Williams' presentation by context. So, here it is, I would appreciate it very, very much, and I'll be very grateful. Over twenty years ago, what's a new development plan is executed. I highlighted a number of these, and we're acting on some of them now. One of them was for green space and parks. Shortly after I was elected, Mr. Carolina has found out that we played basketball together back in DC in the day, and I have some, what's a little aiming for the West End that we could work on? And he said a park at Howard. I worked with my friend Steve Goggins on the Kamitski House. I twisted his arm a little bit, and he gave me a, a concept rendering of a proposed playground. As you see on the first page, that piece of property is generally abandoned and that the concept shows a wonderful opportunity, not only for the West End residents, but also for the school itself. I've met with Mr. Price. He is ready to take it to his school board. He is endorsing it one hundred percent. That school for its, the Howard Optional Education School is for disadvantaged students, and all they have for playground is ten feet of grass in front of that school. So this is a win-win for the school, for the county, and for the city of Georgetown. Do you have any questions?
No, no, we don't have any questions. We'll take it under consideration and discuss further with council.
I would disclose that that concept plan is just a concept, that the county certainly, as a stakeholder, would be participate in the programming of that. The basketball court was added as an idea. We're looking to provide a safe playground for West End residents after school hours. They have access to the property during school hours. The school would use the property. Maintenance would be shared, proposed to be shared between the county and the school, and police support would be by the city of Georgetown, so police force. Funding is up in the air. There should be opportunities for us to find perhaps some ARPA funding, or if we form a, a joint letter, we could petition our state and federal delegates to help support this worthy cause. In nineteen sixty-six, notice was made of the need for playgrounds in the West End. Since that time, there are less playgrounds than in nineteen sixty-six. This is long overdue. The residents deserve a safe space on the West Side. They shouldn't have to travel to bed to find a playground. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a statement.
We probably need to discuss it as a, as a council, really, and we need to just turn it over to our administrator to check into the matter, to see what the council can actually do to assist. That's what I think we probably need to do, really.
Well, yes, that's what I want to emphasize also in our discussions.
Okay. Thank you. We move down to the, that is all right, Teresa. Madam Clerk, that's, thank you. We move down to the approval of our minutes for a regular council meeting on June twenty-eighth, You all have received the minutes and had a, had an opportunity to review. Is there a recommendation for adoption of those particular minutes?
They're moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Goggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second with Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. There are nine matters included on our consent agenda, which were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Contract number twenty-dash-zero-five-nine, task order number two, design of runway eleven-twenty-nine construction, reconstruction. Contract number twenty-dash-zero-five-nine, task order number three, design of apron reconstruction. Contract number twenty-dash-zero-five-nine, task order number four, design of new taxiway and site work for the Sherpa project. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-twenty-two, use of fee road construction, Corner Loop, Belladonna Court, Kidney Wood Way, and Soja Wood Lane. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-four-zero, roll-off trucks for solid waste collections, quantity two. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-four-two, network equipment and service for historic courthouse and judicial center. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-four-five, sub-contained breathing apparatus. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-four-six, State Luke Center renovation project. Procurement number twenty-two-dash-zero-five-five, document scanning and image retrieval. We move down to our public hearings. The public hearing is regarding ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one. If there's any member of the audience which to speak on, ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one, to amend the future land use map for a parcel located on a corner of Maricena and Pennyroyale Road, TMS number zero-one-dash-zero-four-three-seven-dash-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-zero, from low-density to medium-density residential. The floor is now open for comments. Seeing no one making any public comments, the floor is now closed. We move down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one, Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this resolution deals with same matter that's on for first reading of ordinance at twelve A. There is some legal matters that council would need to be advised on in executive session. I would suggest that you move this resolution down to, after executive session and take it up at that time.
There any objections from council to move item ninety-eight after executive session? Do we need a motion to that? I don't think any.
No, sir.
No, we don't, okay. Is there any objection from council?
No.
Okay, thank you. We move down to second reading of, reading of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one, to amend the future land use map for a parcel located on the corner of Maricena and Pennyroyale Road, TMS number zero-one-dash-zero-four-three-seven-dash-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero, from low-density to medium-density residential. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As usual, if you don't have an objection, I'll do items eleven A and eleven B together, this future land use map and the rezoning for this parcel.
Thanks.
This parcel is approximately four-point-three-three acres at ninety-five Maricena Road, and it is currently zoned forest and agriculture. The request is to go to an MR-ten, ten-thousand-square-foot residential zoning. The parcel is currently vacant, and the request is for, is to rezone the entire tract to MR-ten. MR-ten allows for single-family homes, including manufactured homes, at a density of four units per acre and no more than one unit on any given lot. This property does have its frontage on Pennyroyale Road, but there is a smaller street, Maricena, that cuts between this property and the neighbor, neighboring property. Since this tract contains more than four acres, staff does not feel that spot zoning would be an issue in this case. There is MR-ten zoning close to this one, you can see on the attached zoning map. The surrounding tracks are all zoned FA, except for two-hundred-and-forty feet along the rear, which is zoned heavy industrial. And the surrounding properties all have either a single-family residential designation or structures or vacant forest land. And again, that is the county-owned property to the rear there that's industrially zoned. The future land use map designates this property as long, along with most of the surrounding properties, as low-density residential, and there is industrial along the rear. So a change to that map would be needed to facilitate this request to medium-density. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their May meeting on this issue. We had one person that spoke against the request with concerns about drainage, the impact on the wetlands, and the proximity to existing industrial and future industrial uses there. The Planning Commission voted six to one in favor of the rezoning. They also voted six to one in favor of the change to the future land use map from low to medium-density for this tract.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions from council? Ms. Richardson, or for Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Richardson, you said the, the vote was six to one?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Richardson? Seeing none.
Was a traffic study done by any chance, or will it impact, impede, or change the character of the immediate neighborhood?
Uh, Mr. Carolina, a traffic study was not done. We don't require a traffic study unless the proposed project generates over five-hundred trips per day. Even if this site were maxed out at a total, I guess, four acres and four units per acre at sixteen units, that wouldn't reach the level of the, the traffic study.
Okay, so traffic is just along Pennyroyale Road, turning off to Maricena. There's no impact?
Right. If, if they developed it to its maximum extent, that would be about a hundred-and-sixty trips.
Okay, thank you.
What, um, what was the one concern about the no vote on, that come out of the Planning Commission?
I believe there was a good bit of discussion about the proximity to future industrial development and should we be putting medium-density adjacent to what may be industrial at some point.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We, we first deal with ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve ordinance twenty-two-dash-twenty-one.
Okay. A motion for approval from Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We now go down to ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-two. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-two?
So moved.
We have a motion for approval?
Yes.
From Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-three. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning request to rezone two parcels from R-ten, our ten-thousand-square-foot residential, to R-one, which is one-acre residential district. These properties are located on Seadust Trail, which is in the Paulies Island area off South Causeway. The parcels currently have one single-family dwelling on each lot. The larger tract is approximately two-point-seven-eight acres, and the smaller tract is about one acre in size. The adjacent tracks to the north are zoned R-one, and the tracks to the immediate south and west are zoned R-ten. And then the marsh, of course, is located to the east of these tracks, and that is on conservation preservation. Surrounding uses in the area are all single-family residential. The current R-ten zoning allows for single-family dwellings. It does prohibit manufactured homes, and the requirement, minimum lot size is, of course, ten-thousand square feet. The current zoning could potentially allow a maximum of eleven lots on the larger tract and four lots on the smaller tract. The R-one zoning that's being proposed also allows for single-family dwellings. It does also allow for manufactured homes, but the minimum lot size is one acre. And that would basically restrict the lots to what is currently there, except the larger tract could potentially subdivide out one lot. If the proposed zoning, rezoning is approved, any additions or reconstruction to the existing structures would have to comply with the R-one setbacks, which are more restrictive. Both tracks are currently located in a flood zone. In the existing maps, in the twenty-twenty-one proposed maps, the, they will be located in a VE flood zone, which is a more restrictive zone. The future land use map designates these parcels and the surrounding parcels as low-density residential. So the future land use map does not need to be amended to support this request. It is the intent of the property owners to rezone their properties to coincide with the adjacent R-one zoning and the, and the current designation on the future land use map of low-density. This would be considered a down zoning from four units to the acre to one unit to the acre, and, as I said, is supported by the future land use map. We did receive seventy letters of support for this request and no opposition. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in June, and they recommended unanimously for approval of the request.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. It's not related exactly to this, but I was, when I was reading this, I noticed that we still have not implemented the latest flood zoning. When, when do you think that's going to happen? Any idea?
That is the hot question. It certainly has gone on longer than we anticipated. At this point, our floodplain manager is estimating June of next, of twenty, of this year, twenty-twenty-three. I think, I understand that the maps have come off appeal, and we're currently waiting on FEMA to release them so that we can adopt them.
Who makes that decision finally? Is it the federal government?
FEMA, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions from council? Okay. We get a motion regarding ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-three. Thanks, Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve motion, our ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-three.
You get a motion for approval from Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Thank you. We go down to ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-four. Is there Funny?
Mr. Chairman, council, good evening. Tonight, I'm here for you to present the agenda request for the ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-four. This ordinance is to declare as surplus property one-hundred-and-eighty-three-point-two acres of land located along North Frigida Street in the Johanna Community of Georgetown County. Tax number zero-three-dash-zero-four-five-three-dash-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-zero. This, the intent is to authorize the county administrator to sell the property or property or a portion thereof in a manner as prescribed in ordinance number twenty-dash-thirty-two as amended. The county has not identified a need for the entire property and currently has no plan for future development of the property. It's been determined that the subject property or a portion thereof can be declared surplus, and so to the benefit of Georgetown County. The options are one, to adopt this ordinance twenty-two-dash-twenty-four, and the other option is to decline it. Staff recommend the adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-dash-twenty-four. Sir, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Funny. Are there any questions from council?
Um, yes, I have a few. Director Funny, what was this land originally purchased for, for the county?
As I understand, precede me, but as I understood, it's for the construction of a landfill.
Landfill?
Yes, sir.
Is it, um, is it wooded, or has it been harvested?
Yes, we've harvested a couple times, sir.
Okay.
And planted trees.
How, uh, I haven't, I haven't seen the map. How far is it off seven oh one? Does it more to seven oh one at any point?
Yeah, actually, we have, that site contains the existing recycle center in Johanna and the fire substation as well. It's along seven oh one. We have properties. In fact, there's additional properties just north of those two facilities on seven oh one.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a question.
That's my answer.
Mr. Funny, I'm looking at the last portion of this thing. You said the, uh, this is going to authorize a county administrator to sell the property in a manner as prescribed in ordinance twenty-thirty-two as amended. That's back in twenty-twenty. What, what's that manner? Do you have any idea?
No, sir, I don't have.
Okay, I just, just, I was just wondering what the, what that protocol was. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is anyone, um, any, any entity showing any interest at this time in the property? We're just going to declare the surplus and put it on the market?
Yes, sir, there are some interests that have been expressed about this property. Yes, sir, there are some interests that have been expressed about this property.
Have those interests been for the entire piece or just a portion?
Well, actually, we already have improvements on, on a portion of this property, which is the fire station and the recycle center. And we are recommending that we retain additional land for emergency purposes for lay-in areas in case we have a disaster or something like that as well.
So there'll be a relocation of that fire station and the recycling center?
No, sir. We are recommending that we retain those sites as is, that we have those properties removed from the 183 acres and, and reduce the, the number of properties that we, the county wants to sell. On mixed surplus.
Okay. I just have one, one question here, really. It may be directed more to legal than, than to you, Mr. Funny. In the, at the end of the, the ordinance, it basically states that the county council declares the identified property at approximately 183 acres, identified TMS number 03-0453-003-01-00, as surplus property, and to further authorize the county administrator to sell the same in accordance with ordinance number 2032 as amended. I think some of the comments that were made here basically top, give the administrator the opportunity to, to sell the property or part thereof. Should that, should that language be included within the ordinance which says or a part thereof?
You could, if you, if you felt the need. I don't think it's critical to have that in there. You're going to have the entire tract surplus. The county's not obligated to sell any of it, but at such a time as it might find the need or desire to sell all or a portion of it, it would be, and the property would be available to sell, and the county administrator would be authorized to do so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the county administrator does not get caught up in saying they'd have to sell the entire tract and not offer any portion of it.
Certainly, if, if you would like to move to add that language or a portion thereof to clarify on the record, that's fine. And, you know, it's, it's advisable if you'd like to do that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or any thoughts from council?
I'm, I'm still struggling with this, whatever the, whatever the prescribed method was back in 2020. I just, I'm just wondering, are there some line items in that protocol? And I'm just coming up with this language that, that's different than we'd normally sell a piece of property. Why is that even, that language even in there?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't, and, and I'm pulling off the top of my head here. So I'm going to put a huge caveat on here that I might amend this later. I previously was looking at the ordinances for the county for the disposition of property. 20-32, as I recall, is our procurement ordinance, which deals with all purchases and, and disposition of property. Within 20-32 is 2-64 and 2-65, which each deal with the disposition and sale, whether it's, it's lease or sell or other transfer of property rights by the county. So this is simply the overall ordinance section, which within there are the subsections which deal with the transfer of property and sale of property. And specifically within that is 2-65, which deals with sale of surplus property.
Well, you answered my question. This is our standard protocol that, that the administrator and procurement will follow.
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Funny. May, we have a motion regarding ordinance number 22-24.
I so move.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 22-25. There are, okay, one moment.
We're, we're still talking about the last. Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, you had asked on this last one that you just voted on whether to add the or portion thereof language, and I was thinking that you were about to do that. Did you want to amend that motion to add that language?
Well, I was trying to get some advice from you as to whether it would be necessary to do that, and I came up with the conclusion that it's not necessary to do that.
I don't think it is necessary, but if, I, I don't think it's necessary, no, sir.
Okay, that's why I didn't make that motion. Thank you.
So we are now at 20-25?
Yes.
Okay. This is on, it's regarding the restraint of animals. I think all the council members should have received a draft copy previously with the changes, and thank you again for your input on that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from council?
I just have a kind of question, comment. We went back and, and massaged this, I don't know how many times, but we added in for the western part of the county. That, that concerns me with this was the, the penning, the penning of animals. So we went back and we added 2G, which states paragraphs A, B, and C, non-withstanding animals kept for lawful hunting, sporting, and farming use may be kennelled or penned on unoccupied property, provided that requirements in paragraph D, E, and F are met. And that was mainly, for the council members, that was mainly for the, the large amount of hunting dogs and sporting dogs that are kept in the west part of the county. A lot of those animals are kept on unoccupied property, be it a hunting, hunting land or near, near the residence. There's so many of them, most of them don't want the animals that close to their residence because of the constant barking that they do every time somebody rides by or something. So that's why that was added, and we put that in there just to, to protect them from the, everything above there. And Lewis, your district, district and my district mainly are the three that has to deal with that.
That's correct.
I'd just like to confirm that I agree with those gentlemen. I'm around that sort of thing a lot also. Although I live on the neck, I'm, I'm a prude to this, this behavior, and I totally agree with the verbiage myself, for whatever that's worth.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 22-25?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 22-25 as written.
It's moved by Councilman Galkins for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Since the text has been amended, is there a motion to incorporate the text?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do incorporate the text and amend the, amend the text.
It's moved by Councilman Galkins for the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. We first vote on the amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. We now go back to the original motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We now to item 12, first reading of ordinance. I'll go to our attorney again regarding first reading ordinance on item number 12.
Yes, sir. Again, this, this ordinance is, relates to the resolution, which we will take up after the executive session. Has to do with the bond and international paper company. Our bond counsel, Ms. Franny Heiser, is here. I think at this point, you just need to read it in. It's on for first reading only at this point.
Okay, thank you. We'll deal with that after executive session. Thank you. We will now move on down to legal briefing, executive session. We are looking to, to go into executive session regarding legal briefing regarding contractual matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-78.2, and also briefing regarding economic development matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-78.5, and briefing regarding economic development matters pursuant to SC Code annotated 30-4-78.5. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? We are now in the executive session.
...
Where did the audience go?
We even lost our online audience. We were down to two people who we think are Jackie and Randy.
Okay, we're back. Is there a motion to go back into open session?
No moves.
Moved by Councilman Anderson is their second.
Second.
Second by everybody. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Okay, we're now back into open session. Please note that we have returned from executive session to discuss legal briefing regarding contractual matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-70A2. Also briefing regarding economic development matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-70A5. And briefing regarding economic development matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-70A5. Please note also that no action was taken, no vote were taken on any of those particular matters. And there are no decisions made. There are a couple of items we need to discuss based on information we received. Resolution of proclamation, item 9A on our agenda. And Bill X Attorney Watson to highlight us on resolution 9A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Simply need a, if council approves the call for motion on this one. This is for a bond, it's for international paper where the county cares to issue bonds for some of their debt. It's a refinancing. It's one that has historically had a relationship between IP and the county for this debt. And they're simply wanting to refinance for a better rate.
All right, thank you. Is there motion regarding resolution number 21-22-21, sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I move for its adoption.
Yeah, the motion by Councilor Johnson for adoption of resolution number 22-21 is their second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Close. Motion carries. The other item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinances. Item number 12A. Ordinance number 22-26, first reading. Authorizing Georgetown County, South Carolina to issue from time to time or at one time in one or more issues of series its refunding revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,600,000, the proceeds of which will be used to refinance the cost of certain solid waste disposal, wastewater treatment, and sewage facilities by refunding the issuer's environmental improvement revenue refunding bonds in National Paper Company project series 2016, currently outstanding in aggregate principal amount of $7,600,000 pursuant to section 4-29-10 and Secretary of the Court of Laws of South Carolina of 1976 as amended. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust and entry loan agreement or financing agreement and similar agreements providing for the issuance, sale, and purchase of such bonds. And authorizing the issuance of the bonds and execution of necessary documents and taking up any other action necessary to be taken by Georgetown County, South Carolina to cause the issuance and sale of such bonds. That is the first reading of ordinance number 22-26. Any further business to come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No moved.
Is moved by Councilman Anderson is their second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion?
Let's move.
All in favor? Please raise your hand. All opposed? We now stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.